Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present virtually. And please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me for my jacket. Still see by the floating head here, sorry. Anyway, let's, I do want to take a moment for a moment of silence. Since our last meeting, we have lost quite a few in Madison. And so I want to give them the respect they deserve, but please bear with me as we go through some of these we have lost. Sam Serciello, lifelong resident of Madison, died on August 15th at the age of 79. He was a member of the Madison Council from November 2009 through December 2011. He was born in Summit in 1941, and he and his two sisters were raised in Madison. After graduating from Madison High School, where he was a football team captain and a 1959 MVP Award recipient. Sam enlisted in the United States Army and proudly served for two years during the Vietnam War, earning the Vietnam Service Medal and Combat Infantry Badge and marksmen badges. He became the co-owner of Operative PS Pub from 1971 to 86. And when he left the pub business, he founded the Serciello Contractors with the motto, "You and I design it, rebuild it." I often wondered whether that "we" included me, you know, the customer anyway. He could often be seen around town holding court, telling his bad jokes, but we all appreciated him. And his places to hold court were Esquire, CJ's Deli, Main Street Subs, and the Y, as he worked out. When he stepped out from council, I named him liaison to the people because he would often say at council meetings, "Everyone is saying," and then he would go on to explain something, so I felt it was appropriate. Sam also would appreciate the fact that we ended the executive house, even though our public meetings started a little late, we ended on time because it was, that was one of those things on council, we always end it on time. In a way, Sam drove all of us crazy, but we loved him just the same. He is survived by his wife, Gail, his two sons, Vijay and Sebastian, and two grandchildren. Then Carl Weisberger, born on October 11th, 1937, passed away on August 25th. Carl enlisted in the Army National Guard and proudly served for four years. He worked many years as team fitter at local 475 until his retirement in 2000. He was a volunteer member of Madison Fire Department Ladder Company, serving for 51 years. We recently recognized his 50 years. Carl met and married the love of his life, Margaret Darty, and Carl and Margaret raised family and recently celebrated 62 years of life together. He is survived by his wife and one son, Paul, three daughters, Lisa, Sharon, and Beth. And survived by 13 grandchildren. And also, very sad to say, Liz Osborne, our clerk, lost her father-in-law, Carl Osborne, died on September 6th, 2020. He was 88. Carl served our country, the United States Army, stationed in Germany during the Korean War. He is survived by his son, Doug, Liz's husband, and his grandchildren, Colleen and John. And then the Serciello family had another loss, is Joan Serciello Sedano, lifelong Madison resident and sister of Sam, passed away on September 2nd, two weeks after Sam. She was 81. After high school, Joan worked part-time at Chubb and Son. She married a beloved husband, Joseph Sedano, the day before her birthday, on June 15th, 1958. And the couple remained in Madison, raised their family. She worked part-time at Gruber's Bakery, but some of us will remember that. And then she also worked at Madison Pharmacy. She's survived by her husband, 62 years, Joseph, and daughters Luann, Tracy, and Patricia, and five grandchildren. And John Forte Senior, longtime Madison Crescent resident, passed away on September 2nd. John was born in Morristown and then grew up in Madison with the blocks of his entire extended family and was a fourth-generation Madisonian. John remained in Madison until 24 years ago. His son, John Forte Junior, obviously a fifth-generation Madisonian and raising a sixth generation. He also has a daughter, Carol Anne. John Junior is a member of our planning board and Historic Preservation Commission. He also leaves behind four grandchildren. And Annie Bayton died on August 13th, born in 1941. She spent her early childhood in Virginia, but returned to New Jersey as a teenager, graduated from Madison High School. She was courted by her husband Curtis, and they were together for 59 years from high school years until they, and they married in 1961. She taught sewing classes at the community house. She was also an active faith and faithful member of the First Baptist Church, where she was a church secretary for many years. She was also active at the Bethel AME Church. And Bottle Hill Day will not be the same without her famous sweet potato and coconut custard pies on both church tables that would be sold. She leaves behind her husband Curtis and four daughters, Tracy, Carolyn, Joyce, Kimberly, and also leaves behind eight grandchildren. And then on September 9th, we lost Willie Alfred Sally. At the age of 93, Willie was born in Madison in 1927, graduated from Madison High School. He served honorably in both the United States Merchant Marines and the United States Army. He met his beloved wife, Doris, in Summit, and the couple married in 1954. They settled in Willie's hometown in Madison, right on Elmer Street, where they raise their family and share the wonderful life of 66 years of marriage. He had several careers before starting his own paving company. I have the pleasure of using Sally's construction for many projects at the Y. He was a former trustee of the First Baptist Church of Madison, an active member of American Legion Frank Patterson Post 43 of Florham Park, and certainly a well-respected, loved member of our community. Willie was the first and only African-American grand marshal to the Madison Memorial Day Parade. He is preceded by two sons, Lawrence and Raymond, and one daughter, Carol. He is survived by his wife of 66 years, Doris, and seven sons, Robert, Edward, Willie, Frederick, Craig, and Alan, and Barry. Two daughters, Rosalie and Rita. So let us take a moment to remember Councilman Sam Serciello, volunteer firefighter Carl Weisberger, Carl Osborne Junior, Joan Sedano, John Forte Senior, Annie Bayton, and Willie Sally. And let's pass our thoughts on to the families they leave behind. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of August 10th, 2020.
I'm moving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of August 10th.
I'm moving.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Greetings here. It's been a long break. And we have our only one meeting in August, and we throw in a five Monday month, and it makes for an extra long break in between. I'm not going to, my comments, I won't try to cover everything that's happened during the breaks, so don't worry. I do want you to mark your calendars that our next meeting is going to be a Wednesday, September 30th, Zeyan Kapoor. A week ago, we celebrated, we go today, we celebrate Labor Day. Not only the recognition of the impact labor has made on our country, but the traditional end of summer. And it certainly was a summer like no other. I want to thank all of you out there that follow the guidelines by canceling traditional barbecues or other gatherings. I also want to thank the staff and board and Madison community pool for giving many families a sense of normalcy in this very different summer. And certainly having the pool available and safe with the protocols in place allowed us all to escape a record number of 90-degree days. I know, I appreciate it. This past Saturday, the Glenwell neighborhood hosted a socially distant block party. And part of the gathering included ribbon cutting for the newly reconstructed road. I thank Carmella for representing me and the council at the event. And thanks the neighborhood for showing their appreciation for the borough's investment. Not every neighborhood has a ribbon cutting for their reconstructed roads. The neighborhood also honored Complete Streets member Kirk Oaks for his effort with sharing the Glenwell neighborhood concerns with our design team. And on August 30th, Madison hosted a celebration of the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 17th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. It's a great recognition of an important milestone, but also a reminder we need to do work to make sure that everyone has the equal opportunity to vote, and those that do have that right, exercise it. Our employees for the month are Carmella Cook and Helene Corlet for accepting new positions to greet visitors at Hartley Dodge at the front of the lobby. And this is a position we put in place during the beginning of the pandemic as we reopen the building so they could make sure that we had temperature checks and people didn't have to wander around the building trying to find where they needed to go. So they would always smile and greet our residents with their warm personalities, and they would just make everyone feel right at home, Borough Hall. So I want to thank them for their flexibility and dedication. And also, if you see, Helene should not only congratulate her on being employee of the month, but also for the fact that she is celebrating her 40th year as a borough employee. Quite a milestone. And now I have two proclamations to present. Karen Zostak, we can bring her on board. I believe she's here. Karen, I guess you're muted. Thank you. There, there we go. Welcome, Karen. I know this has been a very difficult year for you, and we greatly appreciate you taking time to accept this proclamation. This is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, recognized in September 2020. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. It's intended to help promote awareness of surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas Borough Madison is committing to increasing awareness of suicide prevention and wishes to recognize the importance of suicide awareness in our community. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, level of income, religion, or background. And I want to also point out, in this pandemic, I heard one stat, which was one in four have thought about doing harm to themselves during this pandemic. So this is especially important right now. Whereas according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S., and second leading cause of death of young among people ages 10 to 24. And whereas Borough Madison is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations such as American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI, are in the front lines of the battle that still refuse, that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remains too taboo a topic to speak on. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout its life struggle, we need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas we encourage all residents to take time to check in with their families, friends, and neighbors to genuinely convey their appreciation for the existence. By any gesture, they seem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Borough of Madison. And Karen, present you with the proclamation, if you'd like to, which you have there, if you can like to say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As someone who has actually lived through the effect of suicide and who has supported both NAMI and American Foundation for Suicide Prevention as well, I can't emphasize enough how important mental health is to this community and all communities. I have always showed pride and supported the community as well as enjoy being a part of a caring community of Madison. So is my family. I have, I've just asked in the name of my son that people try to treat each other with kindness and respect and welcome everybody and embrace others in friendship, rather than engage in so much negative that I may see on Facebook here and there. And if you can be anything, please be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So well said, and our thoughts are with you. And we will work together to bring help to those in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also have a proclamation, National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September 2020. Whereas, and I don't think we have anyone to accept that this proclamation may correct. So we have done this in previous years also, and it's a very important one. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death and disease in children. And whereas 43 children per day and 15,780 children are diagnosed with cancer annually in the United States. And whereas there is approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time. And whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of the treatment, the treatment toxicity. And where with one quarter being classified to severe and life-threatening. And whereas approximately one-half of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe. And whereas the past 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat childhood cancers. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treating cure children with cancer. And whereas in recognition, should be made to families, friends, and the healthcare professionals, volunteers, and communities who lend their support to children battling pediatric cancer. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim September as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to raise awareness of childhood cancer and extend our admiration to the courageous youngsters who struggle with this disease. So thank you. Okay, we now move on to reports from committees. Finance and Borough Clerk, Council President Vitale, who is sitting very well in my seat as I am here.
A whole new perspective from here, I'll tell you.
Yes.
This is from Finance. It's hard to believe, but I have to tell you, everybody on council, but we've already started the 2021 budget process. Department heads have received documents from administration, including a request for the departments to identify their capital needs for the next five years. Finance Department has also been busy completing the annual schedule of assets and exposures for the joint insurance fund. Every year, new equipment is added and old equipment is removed. It's important to make sure that the schedules are complete so that the borough has the proper insurance coverage. Tomorrow, the borough will be wiring the Board of Education their monthly portion of the taxes. This month, the amount was $3,968,868. From the tax collector, final reconciled tax bills were mailed out on August 27th. We're happy to report that over 98.8% of the third quarter property taxes have been collected. Tax collector is working with the utility billing supervisor to notify the new utility customers that still have 2019 utility balances. These customers will end up on tax sale if they don't resolve their delinquency. The tax sale is scheduled for later on this year in December. From the clerk's office, in anticipation of November 3rd general election, late-night voter registration will be held October 13th, headline for November 3rd. Forms are available in the borough clerk's office or online at morriselections.org. By executive order 177, Election Day, November 3rd, will be primarily by vote by mail. The upcoming general election will be a vote by mail election. All registered voters will be mailed vote by mail ballots before October the 5th. All ballots are postage-paid, and they can be dropped in any mailbox. Number two, they could be dropped off in a drop box behind the public safety complex at 62 Kings Road. Third, it can be dropped at a polling location on Election Day. Madison's polling locations will again be at the courtroom at Hartley Dodge Memorial. Or it can be directly delivered to the Morse County Clerk's Office in Morristown. One polling location for ADA voters only or for provisional ballot voting, and that will be at Hartley Dodge. If you have any problems, please call the clerk's office. I know there's a lot of questions regarding this particular election, so make sure you know what you have to do to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And public safety, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Madison Office of Emergency Management, also known as OEM. It's responsible for the coordination of activities within the Borough of Madison during potential or actual emergencies and/or disasters. To ensure the best service for all residents, OEM is constantly working to make improvements so that service to residents is not disrupted, especially during a power outage or natural disaster. And I think everybody can remember what a great job they did during Sandy. So over the last few weeks, since Tropical Storm Isaius hit Madison, the OEM has also undergone more improvements, which include phone upgrades for seamless transferring of calls from dispatch to OEM and within the emergency operations center, ensuring that all outlets are on a UPS circuit so that in the event of a power outage, phones and computers do not turn off in the three seconds it takes for the generator to kick in. Deployed more workstations for borough employees to work remotely as necessary. Configured the emergency operations center so that if necessary, provide social distancing and can take place while continuing with business, among other small tasks like organizing and labeling all items. As there are a handful of storms which are developing in the Atlantic Ocean, the OEM will be holding a training session for our local emergency planning council, something we are required to do yearly so that in the event EOC is activated, everybody will be prepared. And I think they've done a wonderful job, and you know, it's great to hear that they're continuing with improvements and training. And the fire department in the month of August had 20 general alarms, some investigations, some still alarms, and 28 medical calls. And the fire department's annual aerial testing and recertification was done in August. There were some minor issues found during the inspection, but they are all scheduled to be corrected this month. All fire service aerial trucks are required to be tested by a third-party company once a year. From the police department, you probably read in the paper and heard that there have been a number of motor vehicle thefts along with motor vehicle burglaries. One surrounding community has reported that these motor vehicle burglaries have led to residential burglaries when their citizens have left their keys and garage door openers inside their vehicles. I mean, that's really frightening. These brazen criminals have actually entered occupied residences during the night looking for other theft opportunities, and that creates a very dangerous situation. Our Madison officers have encountered some people who are trying to break into cars here in Madison and during their patrols and thwarted numerous car burglaries and other crimes of opportunity in the past several weeks. But the police can't do it alone. You guys, we have to cooperate. Residents, make sure your cars are locked outside. Make sure your doors are locked. Make sure your garages are locked. We can't stress that enough. Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you very much. And Public Works Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. Summer 2020 saw a great cohort of college interns in the Public Works Engineering and Environmental and Sustainable Jersey Commissions. These students supplemented work on day-to-day operations as well as specific programs, such as the Carbon Footprint Project done by Max Drucker of Drew and Christian Wong of the University of Michigan. Brett Cheadle and Becca Saifi of Drew worked under the supervision of Drew Professor and Sustainable Madison Commissioner Lisa Jordan on a build-up analysis of the borough. Dylan McDonald of Vassar created a master plan for green infrastructure projects on borough property. And Leo O'Gorman, a graduate of MHS and Temple University, worked with Jean Krikovia and the Shade Tree Commission assembling data for a tree inventory. Madison High School students also work with the Environmental and Sustainable Madison Commissions. Jacob Jordan worked on a bicycle and pedestrian audit. Karen Can maintained the rain garden at Gibbons Place. And Meredith Weiner worked on the tree inventory. In the engineering department, Jessica Vogel and Josephine Russo completed a 3,000-point inventory location and condition assessment for poles and transformers for the electric utility and produced a Madison residential rooftop solar inventory for use in assessing the impact of installations over the past five years on overall electric utility uses. From the Environmental Commission, on October 3rd, Madison is throwing a townwide garage sale. To list your yard sale location for $10, you should visit tap into Madison, tap, visit tapinto Madison.net and follow the directions to submit contact. The Environmental Commission is also once again selling composters and rain vallers. To order, write to M E C at rosenet.org. The deadline for ordering is September 29th with pickup on September, October 4th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing the accomplishments of the interns. It's a great program we have in Madison, and it's rewarding for both the interns and the borough.
It's really good stuff.
Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. On the seniors, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and Trytown 55+ have been working with several local organizations to devise ways to deliver services to seniors while avoiding duplication of efforts. The Madison Senior Center has been closed for six months, and there is no senior bus. Food and shopping needs have been accommodated, and there are some transportation options that have been shared with our seniors. For the DDC, the farmer's market continues every Thursday through November 19th. The market is located at Dodge Field, and the hours are 2:00 to 7:00. New vendors have been added this year, so customer health and safety guidelines are posted at the entrances. Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce awarded seven businesses in the following categories. Best new sign, the Snooki Shop. Outstanding window display, the Hat Shop. Outstanding merchandising award, the Pink Pear. Best complete renovation, Sunday Motor Company. Outstanding interior and renovation award, PC Problems. Outstanding patriotic display award, Reapoltry. And outstanding business concept, Buckle Bath. 2020 Madison Car Show has been canceled, as has the Halloween Parade and Magic Show. Aircrows on Waverly Place installation will be from October 22nd through November 2nd. The Taste of Madison 2021 is scheduled for Monday, March 21st, at the Brook Lake Country Club. The Madison Community Arts Center, in cooperation with MACA, the Chamber of Commerce and DDC, a new entertainment series will be discussed at the DDC meeting Thursday night. Fall back into the arts will include swing music, jazz, rock and roll, acoustic, Broadway cabaret, stand-up comedy, and children's interactive theater. The series is planned to take place Friday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Waverly Place from September 25th through November 6th. Local groups are starting to book their meetings and events at the art center, including the Thursday Morning Club. including the Thursday Morning Club, the Masterworks Foundation, Hilltop Title Company, Adams Dental, and the Garden Club. Carol Endorffman Dance will rent the art center from October 9th, 13th through December 18th, with the future intention that this dance company comes into the residence permanently at the art center. The Red Cross is planning another blood drive on October 8th at the art center. Madison Mud will present the Madison Pop-Up Pot Shop, October 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. This will be an exhibition and sale at the art center. Madison Museum, Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. The Last Downtown Concert was held this past Sunday. It was rescheduled from July, and Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill attended. The picnic area behind the museum has been seeing lots of litter. Museum staff and DPW pick up, and an additional garbage can was added. A virtual benefit for the museum will be held on November 5th. More details to follow, but there will be some surprise guests. Work on the conservation and restoration of the interior finished inside the James Library will be started this fall. Thank you to the Morris County as well as the Madison Open Space Committee for their support of this project. A new exhibit, Cholera to COVID-19 Epidemics, Pandemics, and Disease, opens up September 21st. It's a very timely exhibit, obviously, that explores the history of pandemics in the U.S. and the resiliency of the American people. For MACA, MACA did a joint benefit for MACA and the Shanghai Jazz in support of musicians and arts on August 23rd. It was very successful. MACA is launching a new website on September 23rd. The Recreation Department. As planned, the fall portion of the recreational schedule was begun on August 3rd. As it stands now, as many as 21 minute Madison-based groups used across our 15 fields will be served this season. And there are currently 337 background check-approved coaches in the pipeline. The continued cooperation of volunteers is vital to ensure the success of the child safety initiatives. Furthermore, a child safety training program has been added that will now be included in the background check process at no additional cost to the applicant. Additionally, all groups continue to remain vigilant with regard to COVID-19 procedures. All participants must complete a questionnaire and temperature screen prior to each event per NJDOH regulations. Traditional P O P P E has been purchased to aid the fall programs, as was done for the spring and summer programs. One friendly and related reminder, spectators must still adhere to all executive orders regarding masks and social distancing at recreation events. And finally, big thanks to the DPW for all of their efforts in keeping the baseball and softball fields playable this summer. Despite challenging weather, very few rainouts were experienced. This was key to the successful completion of the schedules on what was a very tight timeline. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and Health, Ms. Cohen.
We remain in stage two of New Jersey Road Back reopening plan. Since our last meeting, indoor activity at restaurants, bars, theaters, and gyms have been permitted to reopen. Madison schools have also reopened with hybrid instruction. As always, capacity limits and other safety protocols must be followed. As of today, Madison reports 171 total cases of COVID-19 with six cases actively being monitored by our Health Department. The number of new cases in Madison over the last month has remained low. Like other communities, we have more cases in the younger demographic with a number of our new cases being in patients under 25. Fortunately, we have not seen cases impacting school-aged children in Madison in recent weeks. That said, it is important to remember that families with school-aged children should be especially mindful of activities which may pose a higher risk of transmission, such as social gatherings where masks and social distancing are limited. While to date, there have been no reports of transmission occurring in schools in New Jersey, clusters of COVID-19 causes linked to parties over Labor Day weekend have closed a few schools in our state, including one in Morris County. The list of states and U.S. territories included in New Jersey's travel advisory stands at 35. We encourage you to avoid unnecessary travel to these states. Should you travel to a state on the list, please follow the self-quarantine protocol as outlined in the state's travel advisory. With the reopening of schools, it is important, sorry, to remember that families with school-aged children should be especially mindful of activities which may pose a higher risk of transmission. I'm reading off a screen, and my eyes are not happy about it. Such as social gatherings, wear masks, and social... I said that. Lastly, testing. Check with your doctor and/or visit covid19 nj.gov/testing for details on where you can get a test. The Health Department recommends you get a test if you are experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, but also if you or a member of your household have recently participated in activities with those outside your household when social distancing and/or masks are limited. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Reverend Dunn and the First Baptist Church of Madison for coordinating recent testing clinics hosted at the YMCA. And a continued thanks to Marlene Dolan and Jean Nash, who are handling all the contact tracing at the Madison Health Department. As we continue reopening, expanding our circles, and head back to school, just a few reminders, when you're away from home, practice social distancing as much as possible. When inside public spaces or traveling on mass transit, wear a face mask that covers both the nose and the mouth. Place used gloves and disposable masks in the trash when you remove them. Wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. Often refrain from touching your face. Parents, continue to communicate with your children about how they can protect themselves as they interact with friends or others outside your household. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, one sec. Put my notes away too soon. From the Electric Department, electric crews are working to finish up the storm work repairs and upgrades from Hurricane Isaius. The department has set three permanent poles to replace the temporary poles on Madison Avenue and Westerly Avenue. The crews repaired the Glen Wild Road streetlight feed, which was damaged in the storm. And the department is still removing large branches from lines that... branches that came down during the storm. Downtown Electric Department has been working on the Dodge Field House upgrade project. Crews installed the underground pipe work for the new electrical service. And the department also dug and set two new poles and ran secondary cable for the new electric vehicle charging stations. The Electric Department has replaced the following equipment as part of ongoing upgrades and improvements in town. Added an upgraded back feed at Madison Avenue and Shady Lawn Drive for emergency use and to minimize customer outages in that area. Completed the pole upgrade and transfers at Greenwood Avenue and 171 Main Street. Installed a new transformer and secondary wire to remedy a low voltage issue at Hillside Avenue and Prospect Street. And upgraded the transformer at 9 Barton Street to accommodate the increased power demand. In the midst of all this, the Electric Department continues to perform our streetlight repairs, maintain the yard at the James Park substation, and install new service wires from contractor upgrades, repairs, and new construction. From the Water Department, on August 3rd, a six-inch water main broke on Hamilton Street at 9:00 in the morning. They received a notification from the Madison Police Department, and the water was shut down between 9:30 and 10:00 AM, after which excavation and repair took place. Following repairs to the ruptured main, the water service was reinstated by 1:00 PM. Installation of the water meter AMR system for automatic meter reading is an ongoing process. And the department says that anyone who's interested in having their water meter changed so it can be read via radio read, please contact the department, and they can do so with the necessary safety precautions. That's all for Utilities.
Thank you, and a lot of preparation to catch up with. So thank all the council members for delivering that. Any communications or petitions?
None received, Mayor.
All right, now we move on to our first invitations for discussion. This is limited to the agenda items and resolutions. I will go through those resolutions in just a second so you know what you can comment on. If you want to comment on other topics, you must wait to the next round after our hearings for ordinances. And if, in order to comment, if you're online, you can raise your hand by clicking the hand. If you're on the phone, you'd be recognized by hitting star nine. For security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or a call without a phone number, caller without a phone number identified. Once you are recognized and unmuted, you must state your name and address before starting comments. Failure or do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. And then immediately after that, state the agenda item or the resolution you're commenting on. Because again, this is limited to those items right now. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period, and you'll be stopped at four. And so it's not to take away from your time. We'll capture any questions during your comments and answer them. Either you may be following your comments or during the agenda discussion. And bear with me, we have a lot of resolutions because of the gap in between meetings. Resolution 215, Borough of Madison authorizing acceptance of waiver and release. This is related to the sergeant promotion process. Resolution 216 is awarding a professional services contractor, Mark McDonald, his licensed site remediation to Hartley Dodge Memorial. The amount is $70,300, and this is funded through ordinance upon ordinance 2029, 2020, upon the final adoption. Resolution 217 is authorizing release and restoration bond for Forager Alda Farms, which is Atlantic Health, for the amount of $8,506. And then Resolution 218 is a renewal of various liquor licenses in Madison. Resolution 219 is authorizing the surety and cash bond release for 34 Walnut Street. This is surety bond of $293,000 and cash bond $32,000. Resolution 220 is appointing school crossing guards for the 2021 school year. Resolution 221, authorizing special event permit for use of parking lot by Rotary Club for end hunger event on September 26th. Resolution 222, resolution proven person-to-person placed-to-place transfer of a plenary retail distribution license moving from Cross-Atlantic Vine to Madison Market. Resolution 223, authorizing use of competitive contracting for Parks Master Plan. Resolution 224, authorizing acceptance of a settlement agreement for the issue. Resolution 225, appointing Haley Blyde to the position of Office Assistant Building Department. Resolution 226, resolution appointing Amy Greeley to the position of Technical Assistant to the Construction Code Official. And this is, she's already on board. This is annual salary of $66,000. Resolution 227, approving transfer Sebastiano Basalito to position of Truck Driver Wanted Public Works Department for the electric utility. Resolution 228 is awarding professional services contractor Frank Russo for engineering services to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment. These fees are covered by the escrow fees put in by the applicant. Resolution 229, resolution awarding contract to W E T Timberman for purchase of Elgin Whirlwind Series MV Vacuum Street Sweeper with related accessories. And this is funded through ordinance 8/2020 and will not exceed $292,040. Resolution 230, authorizing cancellation of $31.40 for late fees for real estate property payment. Resolution 231, authorized competitive contracting for community solar study. Resolution 232, resolution authorizing special event permit for use of public parking by Rotary Club for public shredding event on October 17th. Resolution 223, resolution Borough of Madison authorizing community pool parking lot for the Kings Row PTO for several movie nights. Resolution 234, regarding potential fencing and landscape improvements for the subdivided lot Sunshiney School. This is a lot that's been subdivided for future affordable housing. There was concern about the corner of the lot creating site distance issues. And if that comes to fruition, this commits the borough to cutting the corner of the fence. And Resolution 235, authorize an execution agreement for improvements to softball fields in Madison School. This is a partnership with the Board of Education. Again, that was quite a few resolutions. You now know what's in the consent agenda, and they comment on any of those resolutions. Or one agenda item, which is Medal of Honor signage presentation, which you're going to hear shortly. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand at this point. And I don't see any.
There are none, Mayor.
Okay, and we hereby close the invitation for discussion. And we move on to our Medal of Honor signage presentation, and we'll bring on Mayor Gary Ruckelhaus and Herm Huber. Yep. Right. And Herm, I know Gary, okay, except for location, wasn't sure. Okay, Mayor, welcome. Herm, welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, and thank you for all the prep work on this great edition.
Our pleasure, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening, and good evening to the council members. My name's Gary Ruckelhaus. I'm here, along with my colleague and friend Herm Huber, to talk to you about commemorating a Madison resident who gave his life during the Korean War 70 years ago and was awarded the Medal of Honor. Before we get into the details of what we have in mind, Herb, who is a writer, had written a very extensive article about Lieutenant Corson. So I'm going to ask him to give a brief history of Lieutenant Corson's service.
Thank you, Gary, and good evening, Mayor, and the members of the council. Some of you may have read the article that I wrote about First Lieutenant Sam Corson. If you haven't, I'm going to give you the two-minute synopsis. Basically, Sam Corson was a son of Madison. He was born in Madison, and he was raised in Madison. And his father was a prominent member of the Madison community. And he lived at 114 Lawontica Way, and the house is still there. He attended Madison Academy and the Newark Academy, and he was class president. He graduated West Point Military Academy and then got married and had a son. On October 12th, 1950, he was in North Korea, and he led a platoon of men in a vital battle, which was actually on Hill 174. And the enemy was blocking the progression of the armed forces of the Allies, and they couldn't go forward. He was given the task of clearing out that enemy embankment and allowing the army to proceed.
I can't say.
As he, as his platoon climbed the hill and proceeded, there was fog. And one of his men fell into a concealed enemy emplacement and was shot and trapped. Corson, brave man that he was, immediately jumped into the emplacement, and he viciously fought the enemy in hand-to-hand combat. And he killed seven of them, several of them by crushing their skulls with his rifle. The trapped soldier was saved, but tragically Lieutenant Samuel Corson died in the violent struggle. His Medal of Honor citation said, in part, "For his exceptional bravery, gallantry, and intrepidity above and beyond the call of duty." He became the only Madison resident ever to receive the Medal of Honor. His deeds and his life are memorialized in various places up and down the East Coast. Maybe the most interesting one, not too many people get this honor, is that a ferry boat that goes to and from Governor's Island was named in his honor. He's buried at the United States Military Academy. I mean, I'm sorry, at the Military Academy Cemetery. Just a little perspective, there have been 40 million American soldiers who have fought in our wars. Only 3,500 of them have ever received the Medal of Honor, and he was one of them. So that's, in a nutshell, the basic history.
Thank you, Herm.
Oh, I forgot to mention one thing, sorry. He was presented, his Medal of Honor was presented posthumously to his widow and his 14-month-old son at the Pentagon in 1951. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Herb. The reason we are here tonight, my wife and I were driving to Princeton a month or so ago and noticed a sign that
that was next to a stop sign, a stoplight where we had stopped. And I noticed that it was a picture of a Medal of Honor and it was commemorating one of Raritan's residents who had given his life and was, had received the Medal of Honor. Herm and I are working on a book that it's the Madison Heritage Trail Book, which you probably are familiar with. And we're on a committee that is rolling forward the book from the mid-eighties to the present. So I've got Madison history in my mind, going through what's going on from that period going forward. And I thought, all of a sudden, why aren't we doing something about our Medal of Honor winner? As Herm says, thirty-five hundred have been given out oh, since eighteen sixty-one. Forty million people participated in the services, one way or another. Thirty-five hundred of them were found to be exceptional, far more than anyone else. So I came home, I took a picture of the, of the sign. I sent it to the mayor, I sent it to the administrator and they both seemed to be interested in pursuing it, but asked me to go to the Patriotic Celebration Committee, which I did. Each one of the members considered it and they took a vote and it was thirteen to zero to go forward the process. So here we are, we are to the council now, asking for permission to go forward. I'm going to let Herm explain to you exactly what we did to get to our point and then he'll show you the sign that we're going to propose. Herm?
So Gary and I looked at a number of signs across the country that we found on the internet that commemorated the same kind of thing in their particular town. While many of them were very nice, we thought that we could do better. And so we enlisted the services of a local graphic artist, Helen Carr, who graciously volunteered her time and she has spent a fair number, a fair amount of time working on this project. And there have been many iterations of the sign with a great deal of input from Gary and from me. And we finally arrived at a sign, a design that we think is very attractive. It provides meaningful information, it's respectful, it's noticeable. And even maybe even more appropriately, it's appropriate for being read by cars that are driving by at twenty-five to thirty miles an hour. That's not easy to do. So why don't we show you the sign? There you go.
The sign itself is thirty inches by twenty-four inches, which is the same sign as the Raritan sign. We sort of based our thinking on the size that they had because we felt that was appropriate, but we, we really thought we could do much better. And the Raritan sign did not mention the name Raritan. So when I first saw the sign, it was just a couple of blocks away from the Somerville Circle. So I called the Somerville Administrator and he thought I was a little bit nuts. And he said, that's not our sign after I told him exactly where it was. So he sent me to the Raritan Administrator and he was not very helpful either because he wasn't there when the sign was erected, but he did wish us, wish us well.
So. So we, we did a great deal of work with the graphic artists about the particular font and the various colors and the size of the fonts. And as I mentioned, we wanted to make sure that people could read the sign and it's got a very, I think, I think Gary does too, a very neat and clean perspective and look to it. And I think it conveys everything that the sign ought to convey. So this is the version that we think is really good.
The, the budget, I was asked to figure out what the budget would be for the purchase of the, of the signs. And we're proposing that we, we put a sign at the eastern end of Madison by the Chatham border and the western end of Madison by the Morris Township border. The exact location is going to be up to you guys, I'm sure. But the cost would be somewhere for each sign about two hundred and thirty dollars. They're vinyl signs that are put on a substrate that's, it's an aluminum sandwich. There's aluminum on both sides with a fill between the two. It gives it a little bit more strength and we are prepared, if the town isn't interested in covering the cost, Herm and I are prepared to solicit contributions. It wouldn't be a great deal of money. We're talking probably no more than six, seven hundred dollars. If anything comes up and if we have to put up the posts and that kind of thing. So we are prepared to solicit contributions, but it's a very inexpensive project for what we're going to get out of it. Herm, why don't you explain to them our plan, assuming this is approved this evening, for the.
Yeah.
Dedication.
Right. So it's been suggested that a good day to have the signs put up and the dedication would be Veterans Day, which is November eleventh this year. And so we would like, if possible, to invite, to invite a member of the Corson family. When I was writing the article about Sam Corson, I spoke with his son, that little fourteen-year-old boy. I mean, I'm sorry, fourteen-month-old boy, he's now a big guy. And he lives in Austin, Texas. I also spoke with Corson's niece, Mary Ann Corson Doty, who is Corson's brother's daughter. She was eight years old at the time that Sam was killed in Korea. She lives in Queensberry, New York. I don't know if you know where that is, but it's just south of Lake George, about three hours from here. So my, my wish would be, once we get a date set and everything is all set up, to call them and see which family member might be able to come and be present at the ceremony. I think that would be a really, really neat thing for the town and for them.
Okay, I guess that's our pitch, Mayor. We're open for any questions.
All right, so Michael, if you can take down the sign for now so we can, I can see everyone's beautiful faces here. I guess, thank you for your work on this, Mayor Gary and Herm. I had the pleasure of hearing Herm present to Rotary Club the story of Sam Corson. And it was, you know, to hear the whole story is very impressive. So you have a chance to sit down with Herm and get it. And as pointed out, so few Medal of Honor recipients, it certainly is a pride of Madison. And I like the idea and I suggested to Gary that our DPW can, I'm sure you have a sign post so they don't have to worry about that and can do the installations. If the council feels this is a good thing to move forward with. Comments?
Absolutely a good thing to move forward with.
Um.
Take your job.
And Herm, it's a beautiful sign. My only question relates to, I guess, procedure. Right now we have a sign of facade committee with the DDC. We, we've been talking about branding and how we put signs up in Madison. Should they be brought into the loop so, you know, we have, just to make sure we're, we're doing it in the proper way since we have this, you know, DDC committee that is involved with signs throughout the town? That's my question.
Yeah, they have not done it with street signs. The branding is certainly a question. I think if we're, if we're going to try to do Veterans Day twenty twenty, that would be a difficult process to go through. We could have our branding team take a look at it and see, just confirm that, you know, it's difficult to recognize a Medal of Honor winner and have it branded and all be readable from a moving car. Ostry, go ahead again and then we'll go to Deb.
Okay, so I was just thinking that, you know, when I was listening to this, I was thinking, gee, would it be beautiful in one of our parks, you know, like James Park or our park where we celebrate Veterans Day, you know, with the service and everything? I was just wondering whether it would be, you know, that would be more appropriate spot and whether the DDC opines on that or not, I don't know. That's all. Thank you.
Just to follow up on what Ostry said, I was actually had in my, and I, I think the idea is great and we absolutely should do it. But maybe having our Director of Business Development and our Communication Technology Coordinator, so Lisa Ellis and Michael Plessier, just take a look at it and help refine the design just a little bit, you know, without going through the whole DDC committee, but they're aware of signs. And so that might speed up that process so we don't, we can hit that November eleventh date and have it ready.
Thank you. So we will, we'll hand it off to them. I think we'll try to keep, keep this moving forward. The idea is this, again, would be street signs posted along Main Street and Madison Avenue. So respective to east and west end of, as you come into town. Any other comments?
All right, so. That would be on Route one twenty-four.
Great, correct, yep.
Nice job, guys. Way to go.
But I'd just say one more thing, I mean, Gary and Herm, did, did you discuss different places like the, the parks? You know, James Park or Condorso Way Park, which are, you know, are military remunerated parks?
We've talked about other locations. We wouldn't be against putting one up there, but we think that to get the exposure for the name, it should be on a fairly heavy traffic road. So if you want to put up one in Condorso Way, we'll buy another one. That's fine.
My, 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 my feeling is that these are street signs and appropriate for street areas. Whether if we wanted to do something in Condorso Way, I think it would be something different. Would be just my general thought.
That's fine, too.
Yep. So, and I, I think the cost is, can certainly, though unbudgeted, I think we can find turnover a rock or two in the borough to cover the costs and I don't see any issues.
Herm and I don't have to have our hat, our hat out at the corner?
If you can, do that for another worthy cause.
Okay. I've been accused of doing that a lot.
That's how you become a successful mayor, you know?
You should know.
Any other comments or questions for, well, thank you very much and we will move forward with this and and soon we'll quickly turn over the internal review so then you can move forward with the ordering and then hopefully be ready for November eleventh.
Terrific. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we now move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held August the tenth, two thousand and twenty. Were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance twenty-six dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing certain provisions of Chapter one ninety-five, Section thirty-two of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
I open the hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to comment, under the same guidelines I stated before, please raise your hand by clicking the hand or doing star nine if you're on the phone. See none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-six dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll poll vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-six dash twenty twenty adopted and finally passed and ask clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending the affordable housing provisions of Chapter one ninety-five, Sections forty-seven and forty-eight of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance.
Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance twenty-seven, please raise your hand now. See none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll poll vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty twenty adopted and finally passed and ask clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating two hundred thousand dollars from the Electric Utility Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of utility meters and accessories.
I open hearing for ordinance twenty-eight twenty twenty. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. See none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll poll, yes, Rachel.
I just wanted to mention that this is a bit of a milestone. This is the final major purchase of the smart meters for this tremendous project that the borough has undertaken. And so this is a great milestone that we're making our final purchase and going to be moving into the next phase of deployment for the meter. So I'm glad we've gotten to this point.
Excellent, thank you. I have a new meter on my house now. Okay, roll poll vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty adopted and finally passed and ask clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating eighty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for continued remediation at the Hartley Dodge Memorial.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. See none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll poll vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty adopted and finally passed and ask clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. We now move on to our second for invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. Same rules apply. Please raise your hand by clicking on the hand or star nine if you're on the phone. And for security reasons, we will not recognize anyone that's listed as anonymous or call without a phone number identified. When you are recognized on mute, you must state your name and address first before starting your comments. Whether to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. Please try to keep your comments to five minutes, I mean, five minutes, three minutes, just see if everyone's paying attention. But we'll give you a one-minute grace period for a total of four minutes. And again, if you have questions in there, we will capture those and answer after your comment period. Anyone wishing to comment? Does that bring, just speak back up again?
No hands, Mayor.
Raise your hand, yep, I see no hands. We close, hereby close the comment period and move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Wednesday, September the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new rescue pumper and firefighting equipment.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Council discussion, I was going to call you on you anyway, Ostry, but yes.
I, I just want to thank the chief. He worked with the borough administrator and us to really find a competitive price and figure out. and figure out what he really needed. He put together two purposes into one truck, and I want to thank him.
And this represents multiple, multiple years of funding, so.
Correct, yeah, gathering, yeah. And, and finally getting the price down a little, too.
Yeah.
Which is, was important.
Very well done. Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 31-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $300,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of utility poles, transformers, and additional electric materials.
Mayor, I move ordinance 31-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Yep, Rachel?
To put this in context, we heard recently from Jim Matina, the head of our electric department, that there was, you know, in order to keep our crews well-supplied and ready to respond at a moment's notice, they need to continually replenish their supply of this equipment. And it was being prepared, organized, and having these materials on hand following the recent storm that allowed them to be responsive. So it is certainly wise for us to plan ahead and have these materials on hand for our electric department.
And to reinforce that, when I walked Maple after the tropical storm, there was a comment saying, I guess this is going to take quite a while to repair, because you'd probably have to get the utility poles in and transfer transformers in. I said, "No, we have them on the yard. You will have your power." And if, and if Herm was still on the line, he could verify, because he lives on Maple. So thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 32-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $15,228 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for reimbursement of drainage and remediation capital projects at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts.
Mayor, I move ordinance 32-2020.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
What happened?
Yeah. She froze.
Yep.
Yeah.
There we go.
And Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Thank you. A lot of orders to get through. Consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R215-2020 to R235-2020.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be removed? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher list?
The current fund, $7,443,288.58. For the General Capital Fund, $337,172.83. For the Electric Operating Fund, $961,699.89. The Electric Capital Fund, $4,458 even. The Water Operating Fund, $45,054.19. For the Water Capital Fund, $13,720 even. For the trusts, $118,434.23. The total is $8,523,818.72.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
And under new business, I'd like to make the following appointment that does not require council consent, and that is Tom Harris to the planning board to fill out the unexpired term of Tom Lewis. And with that, we are to the last agenda item.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Stay safe, Mayor. Bye.
Thank you. I will.